Good morning and welcome to the February 8, 2023 City Council meeting. We're glad you're all here. We're going to start off with the invocation from Councilman Westbrook followed by the pledge. If you'll please stand.
Please bow your heads right with me. Oh heavenly Father, we're so, we come to you with great humility and with great thanks. We thank you for this life-giving rain. We thank you for our city leadership and our city staff that serve our citizens every day. We thank you also for our first responders, our police, our fire, EMS, and even the encore linemen who work 24/7 to keep us safe. We ask for this council and mayor, great wisdom and humility, give us the courage to do your will and the strength to see it through. We ask all these things in your name, Christ Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will start with the minutes from the January 11, 2023 meeting.
Move to approve the minutes as presented. Second.
Motion by Westbrook, second by Wynn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. P1.
Good morning. Morning, Mayor and Council. Yeah, I have P1 before you. It's always a pleasure to be able to bring this to you each year. This is a request that City Council consider accepting the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its 2021-2022 budget document. And this award is provided or issued by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. This is our 15th year to get this award, and this award basically is our budget. And yeah, the budget document is on the website for all our citizens and anyone who's interested in that document. This document, basically what they judge on is if it's a policy document, does it display our financial plan, operational guide, and it's community-based advice. So having said that, I recommend that the City Council consider accepting the Distinguished Budget Award for 2021-2022 budget document, the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. And having said that, I would like to recognize my staff member that puts all the heavy lifting in getting this document out. Lauren Jess. She's the one that really puts this together, but like I said, the document is out on our website. It's a very beautiful document. Also, we have some assistance on the publication side from Julie Goodgame this year as well. So having said that, just like for you all to accept this award, we've got a plaque here that is displayed in our lobby, so.
Oh, great. Kedrick. So how long have you been the CFO?
Ten years.
So you didn't mess anything up when you came onboard?
No.
Well, good job on 15 years. You've done a great job of learning. We love working with you guys. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, H1.
Morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning, Chief.
Well, prior to that, we've been three years since we come back and review our juvenile officer warnings. Here, it continues to be a vital part of our operations over the last three years. We've issued 65 citations of warnings, and we also have issued other reports that were taken. There were 10 of them that had to do with us contacting individuals. But this doesn't include that if the opportunities where we come across somebody where there are criminal offenses that have occurred, whether it's a burglary, whether it's possession of marijuana, or something like that, where we make those arrests and make those charges and refer them back to family members or release them back to family members. So today, we request that City Council conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance, meaning entitled City of Chapter 4 relating to renewal of the juvenile curfew ordinance. So on this, I guess you have to, the gall of letting a hearing and then take a vote.
Any questions for Chief before we move into a public hearing? All right. We will now enter into a public hearing. Does anyone here wish to come and speak to this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move to approve, H1.
Second.
Got a motion by Westbrook, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. H2. Morning.
My name is Larry Everett. I am the Community Development Manager for the Labor Services Department. And what I want to do is talk to you about approving a substantial amendment that we're headed to do with HUD. And basically, we are looking at doing a substantial amendment for the 2022 and 2023 annual plan, which we're in now, and then the program year 2021-2022 annual action plan. And after the hearing, we consider approving this substantial amendment. And I'm going to go through the substantial amendment to explain what we're doing and explain some of the reasons why we're going in that. And of course, in accordance with the Youth Department of Housing and Urban Development, better known as HUD, we have to follow certain guidelines, and that is one of the guidelines, allowing citizens to be able to make a, some type of comment, either positive or negative. And with those comments, we'll submit back to HUD and let them know what we have, what the citizens have said in our community. When the process, and this process includes a 15-day public comment period, of course, we are looking at one public hearing, which is today, and it's beginning February 8, and that public comment period will extend through February 23rd. And once we see what we get in comments from citizens, we hope to, if we get this approved, then we'll send it to HUD for final approval. And as a little proposal, I'll start with Amendment Number One, and it's regarding substantial structure funding. And the proposal is to increase funding, reallocate $100,000 dollars to substantial structure projects, and those funds will come from the public facilities project. And this will make more funding available for administration and demolition of substantial properties. What we found is there seem to be an increase in substantial properties in the community, and we're looking at ways that we can accelerate that process and try to address some of those issues. And these are the reasons that we look at it. Creating slum and block, particularly in the Lomond area, and we feel that if we can increase this funding, we can get more partners involved, and we can do this with collaboration with co-enforcement, of course, neighborhood services, commission contractors, and also the Neighborhood Revitalization Board. And we are already funding $50,000, and of course, add that $100,000, $50,000 that we can move forward with this process on the amendment number one. Proposed Amendment Number Two is giving a new allocation of funding. It's coming from our funds, and again, we're collaborating with HUD. HUD will allocate about $1.3 million, and we will use that to address the homelessness assistance and support services assistance in this area. Unfortunately, these grant funds are really specific in terms of how we use them. They'll be used primarily for individuals and families in a specific population called qualified population. There are two provisions of this amendment that we were appealing to HUD for. And you see the funds we use to construct rehabilitated rental housing for occupancy for those people or families that are having problems or within that qualified population. Or we could use it for, in order to acquire a structure, and which will create entry point that we can use as a temporary shelf to address the homeless population. And we have to submit this actuarial plan by March 30, 2023 to HUD, and those funds are contingent on HUD's approval. And once we get the systematic of approval, we can get those allocations of funds through our allocation plan. Now, I want to kind of address temporary qualified population. So what is qualified population? So basically, there are four uses of the qualified population. Let's see. Number one is individual families who lack a fixed regular and adequate nighttime residence. Number two, an individual or family who immediately lose their primary nighttime residence. Number three, conundrum, youth under 25 years of age, or families with children in that age group. They might not qualify as homeless, but they may be at risk of becoming homeless. And then number four, an individual or family who is fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, human trafficking, or labor trafficking, et cetera. Now, under all these categories, it's got a lot more details in terms of what these represent, and I just want to give you the basis of why those are considered qualified population. Staff recommends that City Council approve this substantial amendment for the two annual plans, which we will have to still go back and correct the consolidated plan, which is a conglomerate of all its plans. And then if we can get those correct, we can move forward with this project. Do we have any questions?
Any questions for Larry before we move into a public hearing? All right. We will now move into a public hearing. Anyone out there wish to come and speak to this item? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Sound good.
Got a motion by McKeller, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Larry.
R1. Chief.
Good morning again. For the fact we always do or constantly do, and it's looking for grand opportunities to enhance our capabilities as a police department. And this year, we're looking at it with a security trailer that will allow us to place it on the square or somewhere else where there's a large crowd, allow us to glue up cameras, so we can have an overwatch of the crowd and make sure that we keep it as safe as possible. It's often hard to be inside of the crowd and see what's going on 10 feet away. Boy, I think if we can place it in areas like a ferry, we can place it where I don't need to visit center, if there's something going on there, to make sure that we can watch it from a mobile site somewhere else than on a computer. And this year, we are requesting that City Council, we recommend that City Council adopt a tax resolution authorizing the city manager and title of police department to apply for and accept grant funding from the Department of Justice through to Edward Burner Memorial Justice Assistance Grant on an amount not to exceed $47,116.95 to purchase a telephone company.
Yes, I can, you're telling.
Doing our favor.
A teaser.
Yeah.
But you were on a roll. I couldn't get in there.
Let me take a step back here for a second. This is a trailer service. This recommended City Council adopt a resolution.
I'm going to loan you some of my Prevagen. He's really excited about R2. You got to get your R1 back.
You got four items coming from there. I'll take a step back this one. About three years ago, we started the process of moving forward, replacing G-TAC computers with our laptops or tablets in our cars. We're trying to get to a process where we can attach them or link them with the amortization of our cars, replacing them out every five years. So when the car goes out, a new computer goes into it. So on these, last year, we requested about $50,000 received, $27,500, and bought nine computers to put in the car. We use the city loan to supplement the rest of it. This year, we'll make that request again and continue moving forward. There is a potential for a 20% max that we would make in next year's budget if necessary. Sometimes they require it, sometimes they don't. It's required and recommended that City Council adopt a tax resolution authorizing the city manager and title of police department to apply for and accept grant funding from the Department of Justice through to Edward Burner Memorial Justice Assistance Grant on an amount not to exceed $47,116.95 to fund and purchase of 15 G-TAC A140 tablets and adapters.
Any questions for Chief? Any question for Chief? And does everybody know what we're voting on?
Chief, tell me more about this.
We're getting computers.
Yeah, tell me more about this trailer. Do the 15 tablets fit into the trailer?
With these computers, we'll be able to access those and watch them on our computers and cars.
Move to favor R1.
Second, now that we stepped back a couple times.
All right. We got a motion by Wynn, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I know this is new out of you guys.
Move to favor R2.
We can raise the report, this is not a committee for us in the public hearing. Because it is a regional resource, we require also somebody else to question. And it is a great feature. We'll be able to see things available about 13 feet. This will allow us to overwatch the crowd, take people who have security profile on it. Recommend that City Council adopt a resolution authorizing the city, city title of one amendment here. We have to change reference to the chief financial officer. Homeland Security requires that the city manager should make a motion to appoint him as the authorized official. We appreciate that. On behalf of title police department, to apply for and set grant funding from the Office of Government Homeland Security Division grant an amount not to exceed $46,800 for the fiscal year 2023-2024.
Any questions for the Chief? Move to R2.
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Hey. It's a day for the police department here. With the recruiting challenges that everybody in America is facing, police officers have become, apparently, that we stay on the forefront of doing what we can, and we've looked at opportunities for officers to be out there recruiting and give city mayor days off or somebody actually serve as an officer. But we're also, I don't want to fall back, so over the last few years, we've been working on the possibility of looking at lateral transfer from civil service. We got to look at those. We looked at prior service credits because seniority pay is under the sole discretion of the City Council on how to pay it out and how to do it. So we come to you guys today to look for an opportunity for us to enhance, so we don't enhance the officers from other departments that he all, the standards we set for Tyler, to come over and be able to carry over at the seven years of prior law enforcement experience and jump into that pay scale as a police officer, five or seven-year officer. It enhances our pay, so we're not taking a step backward, but it also moves us forward to putting experienced officers on the street. We've had some success recently. We just brought a young man onboard who passed his T-CO test yesterday for April State. Came from Stockton, California, is a robbery homicide investigator. Glad to have him here with us. Another individual is from Oregon, and we're really trying to make ourselves attractive during the best on boards of the public office department. It's a big issue for us, and we've put safeguards in place so that individuals have to apply for it. They got to prove that they had a law enforcement experience as a police officer somewhere else than a sheriff or officer. If we can save that 22 weeks of training time in the academy, we get them on the street faster and we save money here for City Tyler. If we shorten the police training officer program, because usually officers that come onboard and have prior experience are accelerated through that program because of the basic courses they've been doing for five or six years. It's a big deal for us, and we're glad to have this opportunity and be shout out to the City of Eagle here for helping us draft this. And being very careful with the wording to make sure it didn't overlap into other ordinances or other issues. It is for pay purposes only. It has nothing to do with seniority in the department in reference to bidding for a job or promoting within the department. This is just the seniority pay standard we're dealing with here. It recommended that City Council adopt an ordinance, meaning and updating Title of City Code, Chapter 3, Personnel Service, TMR, regarding seniority pay for police officers of the title police department.
So Chief, how many vacancies are there?
We are going to be looking to hire 12 office lists right here. You know, we lost several that retired and went to work at TSD and some other departments around here, and some that just retired, maybe 33 years. Our biggest hurdle now, as we've started to see at this last test, after everybody finished the physical fitness portion, started that, we looked at 14 candidates to bring onboard, looking for 10. And we ended up hiring five of those, and they're outstanding candidates for the latter half. We want to get that number back up into that 50, 60, 70 mark that we're actually looking at, possibly get to 100 would be a big issue for us. We're competing with Longview here because they're all compressing their salaries up against us. I heard it last time during the process that all the cities around here consider Tyler the gold standard in reference to city operations. They've matched us on salary, cities, small cities, a half, and so push theirs up to $60,000. You're seeing the Metroplex put salaries up in the 70, 80, 90,000 dollars for people going to the academy. It's a supply and demand issue. There's just not as many people getting in law enforcement, and they are driving the market pretty severely.
Well, thank you for your leadership and being proactive and the way I have full staff. We all appreciate you. Anybody have any comments for Chief?
A serious question this time. Was this presented to Civil Service Commission before coming to us?
It's not under this standard here because it's a pay issue, which falls under the discretion here. This decision to receive seniority pay is only applicable to me on this one. They, civil service, seniority pay is authorized under the Local Government Code 143041, but it doesn't go any further. It's up to the sole discretion, just like if y'all choose to give raises or decreases down, if you add steps or decrease steps, that's a discretion of the City Council.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions?
Move to favor R1.
Second.
Got a motion by Westbrook, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Good job. M1.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm here today for Agenda Item M1. This is a consent decree project for the Group 5 Pipe Burst Rehab, the bid award. The Group 5 remediation has been broken up into four different packages, similarly to the other groups that we've been doing lately. It's a manhole, there's a manhole package, a mainline specialty pipe bursting package, which is the package in front of you today, a mainline specialty CIPP and a mainline open cut. The scope of work for this particular package includes basins 6, 18D, and 21, which are the yellow basins on that map, which is Group 5. It includes rehab and repair of approximately 115 sanitary sewer mains, which is equivalent to 45,000 linear feet of our crappy sewer mains being rehabbed. It also includes installation of 58 manholes and nine access chambers. There were six bidders on this project, ranging from the 4 million to the 6.8 million, which is about a 45% spread. The low bidder, King Solutions Services, has not done work for the city before. However, KSA checked all of their references. They're currently finishing up a project in Beaumont, and their references all were very positive. And so we feel good about accepting them as the low bidder. So I would request that the City Council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with King Solutions Services LLC in an amount of 4 million, 671,386 dollars for the consent free Group 5 pipe burst rehabilitation, bid 23016, and to adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt.
Any questions for Kate?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kate. Morning, Paul.
Good morning, Mayor.
Morning.
I get to talk to you this morning about Item U2. It is a proposed half-cent project for the Pure In-Lot Place Pipe Drainage Improvement Project. We've got five locations, and I'll show you here in just a minute. We've got problems that have consisted themselves in the form of sinkholes in paving, in sinkholes in non-paved areas. Here's a picture of a sinkhole in a yard. The issues that we've got to deal with, obviously involves some safety issues when you've got collapsing pipes and disjointed piping. We've got to reduce capacity issues. Takes a lot of staff time to repair these, and we've got frustrations because these problems have occurred over and over, I believe. Councilman Westbrook knows about one. It's near and dear to him there. We've got some pictures here, some additional pictures of some of the problems. We've got some holes. We've got some cracked pipes. Again, we've got some joints. That middle one there is a picture of the piping here at Bonner, and I think if anybody tried to go there this morning, you can see a little bit of standing water up our, the water gauge there. We've got a root ball there and a gas line that we're going to, an abandoned gas line we're going to have to remove. So locations that we've got in this project are aligned, it's between McMillan and Dyna, very close to some homes, had some sinkholes in some yards, North Bonner, Thunder Pass I talked about there, Bodark and Summer Camp. We recently did some work there on the storm drains, I'm sorry, in inlet boxes, and that's under a brick street that's in relatively good condition. And we've got vitrified clay pipe under the street with a lot of structural defects in it. The Sutherland Drive is a large sinkhole by that inlet box that was previously shown in that slide right there in the background there. That's in someone's yard. And Brookview Court is over in the woods subdivision. It's a large 36-inch RCP piping, reinforced concrete pipe that is crossing sinkholes and paving and some common areas over there. So just a quick picture of what this project looks like. This is obviously in some corrugated metal pipe, but basically a cured-in-place pipe will be piping inside of another pipe, and we're done. So the recommendation we're due this morning is that City Council authorize the city manager to execute a capital improvement project construction contract with ConstituForm Technologies LLC for the CIPP drainage improvements, half-cent project, $1,046,175, which is a buyboard contract, 635-21, pending approval of the half-cent sales tax board that will meet next Tuesday. And I didn't mention this, but I did, this is a buyboard contract, so I didn't need to go out for bids, but I did talk with three additional vendors. Pricing was very comparable on what we talked about. The difference was that ConstituForm has been here recently, and they were able to get started sooner.
Any questions for Paul? It's not a very exciting thing to spend money on, but it sure is necessary, and all of us agree with that. So thank you for what you're doing.
Move to approve, M2.
Second.
Got a motion by Westbrook, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M3.
Thank you, Paul.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This is a request to have the City Council consider the adoption of a resolution nominated Deloitte Refining for award of a state of Texas enterprise zone project designation. Deloitte Refining was founded in 2005 and is an affiliate of Deloitte U.S. Holdings, which is headquartered in Tennessee and has operations in Tyler, Big Spring, Arkansas, and Louisiana. The Tyler refinery is the only supplier of full range of refined petroleum products within 100-mile radius. Over the next five years, Del anticipate spending 132 million for the execution of a major refinery refurbishment at the Tyler location. An investment of this size was last done in 2015 and is necessary for the continued operation of the facility. The refurbishment would cover about 90% of the facility, and then there's 20 individual projects that would either enhance the viability of the refinery or recapitalize the obsolete portions of the facility. These capital improvements include maintenance and repairs for the refinery along with machinery and equipment upgrade projects designed to maintain regulatory compliance and enhance the efficiency of the refinery operations, and it would also maintain the product quality and reliability. Deloitte currently employs over 300 full-time employees and expects to maintain this existing level of employment and retain all full-time jobs for benefits under the enterprise zone. Deloitte respectfully requests an enterprise zone nomination from the city of Tyler, and staff recommends that the City Council adopt the attached resolution as presented.
Any questions for Heather? Scott, do you want to say anything about Deloitte? You going to come up?
Well, it is the largest taxpayer in the city of Tyler, I will say that. But Deloitte is... But Delic is currently just one of what they consider a turnaround, they have 1,900 contractors here. I think last week, especially with the storm situation, hotel rooms were at a premium here in the city of Tyler. So, they continue to employ people, they continue to give back to different community organizations, and I think they're a great corporate citizen, this is, uh, I fully support this, as well as, uh, you know, their operations here.
So how many Ford F-150s can they fill up every day?
100,000 per day.
100,000 trucks per day? They don't make that much fuel?
Or Chevrolet, whatever.
Okay, I'm not promoting Ford.
I don't know how many of you have, but we're just there.
Do you have any comments for Scott before he gets down? Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for M3.
Move to approve, M2.
All right, we got all kinds of motions, everybody loves Delic. Uh, motion by Wynn, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're down to the consent agenda, do we need to pull anything, or approve as is?
Move to approve, the consent agenda is presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Westbrook, a second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, my report today is primarily gonna be focused on the, just the work and the cleanup that's occurred from the winter storm that we all experienced last week. Um, that was an unprecedented ice storm that impacted Tyler's residents, businesses, and we're very proud, extremely proud, of how our city staff was able to jump in there and to take care of. Um, you know, we've obviously had some experience now with snow and ice, um, and our crews knew what to do, and got out there, and did incredible work in relationship to that. The Streets Department estimates they spent about, uh, will spend about two weeks for cleanup, and I'll talk about that in a minute, but the amount, uh, they were out there beginning Tuesday, uh, putting down as far as de-icer on the, on the roadways in order to make sure that they were passable, um, and that reduced the amount of accidents significantly by their continuation of that Tuesday, Wednesday, and into Thursday morning, uh, to be able to keep those roadways open, uh, for Encore, for our hospitals, and for other emergency services. We continued, we had, uh, we've bought a number of generators in the past for our traffic signals, um, and because of all the continued power outage, that became a crucial moment, uh, thing of just coordinating to make sure that we got generators out to each of the traffic signals as we could, as they would go out, as those came back into service of removing those generators and moving them to the next spot as needed, um, and so Streets was able to keep that going. Streets, and then also had crews from parks as well join in with them, uh, received 453 reports of limbs and trees blocking roadways, um, and they've been working around the clock to kind of repair those. They've currently been able to complete 338 of those tickets, including cutting those trees, removing, and setting the wood, clearing the wood and debris from those areas. With that, we also put in a request to the Texas Forest Service, uh, and they sent a crew to Tyler to assist us with tree cutting. And so, especially on Wednesday, um, kind of that morning, afternoon period, they came in and were able to add to our crews, be able to go out there and continued with as far as getting the trees and limbs, clearing the right of way, making it to where Encore, and we'll talk about Encore in a minute as well, uh, making it to where they can be able to get in there to do their repairs and services as needed. We also solid waste, one of the things that we've announced already is because of now, all the trees and brush damage, uh, we will be getting, uh, tomorrow, for people who've called in, be getting free brush pickup, uh, throughout the city. We expect this will take a couple of weeks. Leroy Sparrow has already been looking at hiring private contractors to assist with our solid waste crews, in order to get, be able to be able to kind of move this along in a faster perspective, just because of the severe amount of, as far as brush, leaves, or not leaves, but, uh, limbs and trees that are having to be put at curbs for, um, for pickup. Also utilities, uh, Tyler Water Utilities was able to keep, uh, water flowing and solid waste treated, even though there was a couple of plants that had some outages that, uh, but because of the work with Encore, and, um, and their continuation of being able to back up, uh, for those, were able to kind of keep things without any type of pressure issues, uh, any concern about water, or any as far as, especially on the solid waste side, or on the waste, uh, the waste water treatment plant side, of that becoming an issue and becoming an environmental hazard. Uh, and so, we were able to kind of make it through that, uh, very well. Obviously, if you've been around some of our different parks, you've seen the impact and damage of that one. Bergfield Park continues to have quite a bit of damage, and we cleaned that up, but there is numerous other parks, the Goodman Museum as well, uh, that have had damage. Rose Hill Cemetery, uh, is also another that, uh, were continuation for the cleanup of that one. And so, um, we were able to open up, uh, the use of the Tyler Public Library, and the Service Center, and the Glass Ray Recreation Center as needed for mobile, for warming stations, uh, for the public if they needed to be able to use those. I don't believe we had anyone that was, uh, that did go to those, but we did open those up to the public as needed. Also, Tom Trimple, as I mentioned earlier about Encore, uh, Tom Trimple did an incredible job of keeping coordinated with us, um, and never breaking down, um, and so, um, we were very proud to have them as partners with Encore, and I think he is here, and, uh, I wanted to give him an opportunity in my report, kind of give you all a little briefing on just Encore's perspective of, uh, this ice storm and the work that they did.
Thank you. I just wanted to come and give my heartfelt thank you to the, to the Mayor and Council for all that y'all did for us during the storm. Ed and his leadership, uh, yeah, I called him a lot during the storm, so, and then especially the, the city staff. I echo what you said, it, it was amazing to see how much work they did out there between the Streets Department, the police, and the fire, how much they helped our, our folks out, trying to get the power back on to the customers as soon as possible. And safe, everybody through this whole ice storm worked extremely safely, and I can't thank y'all enough for the words of encouragement that each never want to be sent, not only for me, but for our workers, and, uh, I truly appreciate it. It was, uh, it was needed at the time, and when I shared it with everybody, uh, they really, so thank y'all so much. Thank you to your staff, and I, I just, just want to say thanks, that's it.
We say job well done.
Well, I'd say job well done. I mean, when I talked to you, you, you were so calm, and, and, and handled everything so professionally. Now, I don't know how long it's gonna take before your hair starts looking like Charles Hill. But I think you're heading that, that direction.
Give me another one of those, and it, it'll be next year.
But, but, but all that being said, let's give Encore a.
Tom, I would also like to thank you, and, and your ability to get in front of the press and the media, and tell them what's going on, um, being open, that y'all, what work y'all are doing. There are other vendors that are in our community that I've received, and I imagine everybody at this, the Oss received countless calls about not getting any response, not getting any information, pointing fingers. You didn't, you were standing there, taking the questions, and shame on the others that wouldn't do anything but hide behind a call center.
Thank you very much. We, uh, and, and we had a lot of contractors coming in from as far out as Alabama, I think, I talked to a, a customer that said, uh, you know, the, the crew that was on their job was from Kentucky. So we had a lot of support from not only our neighboring communities, but also our neighboring states coming in to help the city of Tyler get the power back on. So it, I, it, it was a, it was a huge effort, and not the least, the city doing what they did to help us get the power back on. That was, just seeing how quickly they mobilized to get the streets cleared, so we could get down it, making sure the streets were safe, uh, with, uh, from ice, so that we could get to those locations. County as well, county did a great job too, but, uh, but I just wanted to make sure that y'all knew how much we appreciate what y'all do.
All right, thanks again, Tom.
Thank you. Thank you, Council.
Are you through the city manager's report?
I am, yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, we are gonna go into executive session, so let me read this, I'll make it quick. City council may go into executive session regarding any item posted on the agenda authorized by Title 5, Section 551 of the Texas Government Code. You notice it's hereby given that... Oh, you're just clearing your throat? Am I going too fast? Uh, may go into executive session in accordance with the following provision to the Government Code. Executive item, under Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, Personnel Matters Liberation Regarding the Following: Employment Duties and Evaluation of the City Manager. Any final action to be taken by the city council will be taken in open session. So, we're gonna go into executive session, I don't know how long it will be. All right, we are back from executive session, and we have no action to take, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, we're adjourned.